Evening, thank you all for coming. Hopefully my mic is on. We're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mrs. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Seberg.
Here.
Ms. Di Maria.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Howingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions and corrections to the agenda this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda, Superintendent's Announcements and Spotlights. Mrs. Alrathford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have two announcements before the spotlight.
Okay.
So, the first announcement is when the school board went through the process to determine how we were going to return for the 21-22 school year, we were under the impression that, from the bill, that parents will be able to move freely from virtual to in-person or in-person to virtual. We received clarification from our state superintendent at our last superintendent call last Tuesday, and it is true that if a parent would like to change from virtual to in-person, that can happen at any time, but considering that we're using Virtual Virginia, they have two deadlines. If a parent would like the student to be virtual for the first semester, that registration process will have to be completed before July 15th, which means we would have to have it by July 9th. And then for the second semester, the deadline is December 15th, and we would have to have the name by December 9th. So that is a correction or clarification that we received from Dr. Lane last Tuesday, so I wanted to share that with the board. I do not believe you would have to take action on that because there still is a virtual option, it's just a deadline on when we would have to submit that for the first and then the second semester.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you, sir. So, just for clarification, our parents have to have the names in of their students by July 9th for the first semester and December 9th by the second semester? That's what the parents' deadline is then?
That's correct. Now, the survey that we sent out to parents, we had a June 4th date, I believe. I don't have that in front of me, but I think it was June 4th. So we've been working off of that list. We have had parents that called in to switch. Some went from virtual to in-person, some from in-person to virtual, and we've made those changes in Power School. We will start the registration process with the names that we have, but we have until the 9th.
They have until the 9th?
They have until the 9th. We have until the 15th to get it into Virtual Virginia, so we will send notification home tomorrow after the meeting.
So our parents shouldn't, July 15th has nothing to do with them?
No.
Their day is July 9th?
Correct.
Just want to make sure. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
And then the second announcement is we would like to propose to the board that they consider a one-time payment adjustment for all of our full-time staff from this current year that was on our roster as of May 28th to receive a one-time pay adjustment of $1,600. Depending on when they started with us throughout the year, a minimum of 500, but it'll be prorated depending on the amount of time that they've served with us this year. And then for all substitutes and part-time employees, they will receive a one-time adjustment of $500. So we would like for the board to consider that action.
Thank you. Any motions?
Oh, we want to motion that now?
No.
I've got it.
Right, go forward. Let's see what happens.
Now, you mentioned May 28th. That was the last day of our school year this year, so it's anybody that was employed for the previous year.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that you're not late. You know, if you've retired, you're still part of this group.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, does anyone want to make a motion based on the information we just received?
I'll take a shot. Sir, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the superintendent's recommendation for a payment adjustment for all employees that were employed on May 28th and before, based on their days of service for the last school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Di Maria, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the superintendent's recommendation to give a one-time payment to all employees who were employed as of 5/28/2021, and those who were not here for the full year would have a prorated payment made to them. Is there any discussion?
One more, sir. I'm on a roll here. I have a wife and a daughter who are employed by our school system. Their employment has nothing to do with my vote. I just want full disclosure that they will be receiving funds from this, and it has no, and my vote has nothing to do with that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? Mrs. Williams.
You can tell I'm gonna say something. Just as clarification, I believe we all up here know how this would be funded, but I don't know that the public does. Can you just speak to that, please?
Thank you. Dr. Newman? Oh, Mr. Hawkins.
Hi, good evening. So initially, anyway, we have savings because we've been 100% virtual. You have to remember, we haven't operated our buildings in full capacity, so we have utility savings. Haven't been transporting children to school most of that this school year, and even when we did go back, we didn't transfer half of them back. So we, you know, we have savings in fuel, utilities, substitute teachers, those types of things, so that we'll pay for it initially with those funds, okay? We also have received, you know, federal funding from CARES Act and from the American Rescue Plan. We're not sure whether this would qualify under that, so we're gonna do some more research. We're gonna talk to our auditor. So, but let's just assume the answer is yes. Then we would go back, you know, we still have two years to spend this money. There may be other more important instructional needs, may, we may have other instructional initiatives that we would rather fund, so we'll make an assessment at that time. But I think for right now, the main thing that communication needs to be, to come out of this is that we will pay for it through our operating fund, our normal operating budget, out of the savings that we've incurred throughout this school year due to being in a virtual environment.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I could ask you to stay up there for another moment. Have any of the school districts that we're aware of done this?
Yes, a lot of them. Prince William County has done this, Manassas Park, I know of, has done this. I think Loudoun may have done it, I'm not sure, but those are the ones that I know of right off the top of my head.
That's very helpful.
Prince William and Manassas Park are definite. I'm not sure about Loudoun.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Looking left.
Just a comment.
Vice Chrissy Burt.
I just wanted to comment that I think our teachers have had to work, all our staff has had to work extra hard and in different ways and done many creative things, and I think that this adjustment will help cover that in some way. And it also says that we value our employees. They're the most, the biggest part of our budget, and we need to make sure that our employees feel valued.
Good point, thank you. Any other comments? Not to make one quick comment, Vice Chrissy Burt's right on point, we do value our employees, and we should all note that all full-time employees are receiving the same amount because everybody in our system makes a contribution to help our kids be the best they can be, and we value all of our employees. But with that, I'll have a vote and a motion by Ms. Di Maria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Newman. Now, Mrs. Rathford.
Thank you very much. So we basically have one spotlight for tonight, and I'm going to have a little bit of assistance on this one this evening. So I'd like to ask the Osborne High School Alumni Association representatives that are here tonight to come down, they have a presentation that they would like to make.
Hi, my name is Mark Holson, I'm with the Osborne High School Alumni Association. Mr. Di Maria's a member. Chrissy Belasi is with me right now. It was a sad year for us, we lost one of our members who was one of your employees for a long time, from the beginning of the school system, Mr. Bob Thomas. So on behalf of the Osborne Alumni Association, we decided to give $1,000 to Hayden Elementary School, where he was principal when he retired, to the school. And also with me tonight is his son, Mr. Jeff Thomas, and he'd like to say a few words, too.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Manassas City School Board, my name is Jeffrey Nelson Thomas. My father was Robert Thomas. Excuse me if I have a hard time reading these. My dad loved the school, city school system. One of his founding members, he opened Weems Elementary and Hayden Elementary in the early 80s, and stayed at Hayden Elementary all through his retirement in 1997. Every day he greeted his students and his teachers as they came off the buses at the entrance near the main office. He loved all of his students and loved all of his teachers very much. Those days that were known to most of the students and the teachers that I have received feedback through the sympathy cards were known as the Happy Hayden Days. Those days are special to him and were special to him and myself. Dad was devoted to his children and his community, and he believed that education was the answer. And even a way out. That holds true today as it did back in the 80s, the 60s. He began this, began in education, right out of college. I'd like to thank the Osborne Alumni Association, Hayden Elementary School, and all the members that the teachers and the students still represent, and on behalf of my wife, Alenny, and we thank you very, very much for the time you've given us tonight.
Mrs. Rathford?
Oh, sure. No. I won't turn it down. Thank you.
Turn around.
Okay, you ready? One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three. Great. Okay. Thank you all so much. (applause) That concludes our spotlights and announcements for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rathford, and thank you to the Alumni Association for that wonderful award.
Goodness gracious.
Next on the agenda, Board Committee comments. Sorry, Board Committee reports, I should say, not comments. Vice Chair Seberg?
No report from the Academics Committee.
Okay. Look down here to Mrs. Williams.
No report.
Okay, then look to Ms. Di Maria.
We're good.
And finally, Ms. Stevens.
We just have two items on the consent agenda, Policy DAB and ACC.
All right, thank you. Next up, citizen comments, and tonight we have two different citizen comment sessions. The first one, since it's on this, in this order on my agenda, I'll do it this way. The first one is regular citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the city of Manassas public schools, issues, to speak. So, one is about the American Rescue Act, and that's next. This one is about any issue other than the American Rescue Act, so anyone who wants to speak about anything dealing with Manassas City Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you've taken to be here. We treat citizen comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please note that matters which are properly the subject of closed meetings, such as those related to the performance of school personnel or individual student concerns, may not be discussed during this time. And for the generic or general citizen comment section, I have one person signed up, Mr. Stephen Kent. Mr. Kent, you have three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, I'll try not to speak too fast, so as not to flow through this, but, good evening to the board and other parents. My name is Stephen. My daughter is a rising fifth grader going into Mayfield. I spent some time reviewing the proposed policies to Manassas City's Foundations and Commitments Code, ACC and DAB, the Anti-Racism and Diversity Equity Inclusion Documents. I want to begin by saying I believe that this board is committed to improving the lives of Manassas's kids, and there is no doubt in energy in America for rethinking certain systems. ACC and DAB use a lot of corporate and kind of vague language, which I think obscure what is a pretty massive overhaul to the mission and orientation of the schools here. The central claim of DAB is that inequity exists in Manassas student outcomes on the basis of purely race. It should be noted that studying performance by race instead of other metrics, just like class or zip code, these are choices that we make when we do these kinds of studies, and it is a revealing one. It'd be a lot harder, I think, to determine if the students struggling the most in our school system were clustered in low-income zip codes or impacted by high crime or family dysfunction. That would be very difficult, but it would also, I think, be more illuminating for guiding policy and tax dollars. Tying success to equity and outcome says little about if the ideal is to raise everybody up or to simply handicap. A lower district average for test scores is obviously not a greater good than a higher district average on net, even if it means disparity amongst groups. These distinctions matter to parents. What this policy aims to fix is a lot bigger than Manassas City Schools. Systemic racism in certain areas of life is very real, but using it as a catch-all excuse to explain away classroom challenges is dishonest and burdens kids with a perception of struggle that has real consequences on their performance. Code DAB correctly recognizes the fast track to special ed and the principal's office for particularly black and brown kids, as well as any child, white, blue, or purple, who might just be shy or learn at a different pace than their classmates. In my time doing criminal justice reform advocacy, I've seen a lot of the same things. The disciplinary school-to-prison pipeline and how criminalization of difference sets people up for failure in the classroom, and it leads to a lifetime of harm. But what this policy does is wrong. It looks at historical struggle and places Manassas City Schools in the position of being responsible for eliminating social ills beyond its purview. It calls for hiring waves of culturally responsive personnel as if we live in a society or a city with cultural cohesion between and within racial groups. What is the culture of mixed-race households? What is the culture of a Latino student? Does a Venezuelan immigrant have the same culture as a Guatemalan one? You can't teach based on culture, but we can teach with attention to language barriers and helping all students keep up. DAB empowers this board to funnel money toward consultants, politically-charged staff trainings, and administrative glut, so long as inequity and outcomes exist. It is very much a blank check. I'll skip to my conclusion to respect the timing.
I've got three minutes, sir.
What this does not say...
I've got three minutes, sir, thank you.
May I just make this last paragraph here to finish up?
How long will it take?
Uh, 20 seconds?
Okay, sure, go ahead.
What it does not say in this document is that Manassas City Schools is responsible for teaching kids to read. It does not say that literacy is directly linked to incarceration, and incarceration to broken families, and broken families to poor performance in classrooms, and the cycle goes round and round. I implore all of you to think longer and harder about what this document would open up in Manassas District Schools, and to give parents more time to read and be familiar with it before voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I have no one else who's signed up right now, but do you like to speak? And please state your name.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I am Denise Parks.
Thank you.
And I suppose why I'm going to speak today is because many of the things that are being addressed today, I wasn't completely aware of. So I guess what I want to say is it's about being better informed as to the things that are going on and finding ways to put the information out there. And the reason why that's an even greater point, to add on to what was just stated previously, is that if we're looking to support an educational system where it's a community, how can the community know what they're looking to support if the word isn't out there for what we're looking to address? And if it's to, from what little I have come to understand, if it is about being able to put funds towards the improvement of different efforts, is it really more money to keep throwing at things, or is it where we have to find ways to have conversations with different people for the ones that actually have a say or have a better understanding as to what is really going on? Is it where we hire a consultant to tell us how to think, or is it where we introduce one another to various aspects so that we know how to, how to just manage in that situation? Because our children are people, and our children today are the ones who are going to be doing things for tomorrow. So is it really a matter of just paying someone to come in and tell us how to think, or is it, hey, let's kind of work together and expose one another to different things so that we can all have a meeting of the minds? And again, I wish I knew more information about what, about what everything was and what's going on, but I don't. So I'm really just kind of speaking to points that are, I'm kind of shooting from the hip. But I can tell you that I care, and I can tell you that's why I want my voice to be heard, which is, tell me more, and please put more avenues and vehicles out there for me to know more, so I know what I'm voting on. And I guess very quickly to close with, which some of you may have heard of, where you have a flea that goes into a jar, there's three fleas, you put one flea into the jar, and if it doesn't have a lid, it jumps out. You put a second flea into the jar, and you put that lid on, and once you've covered it, and you, and you take the lid off, that one flea that knew how to jump out before suddenly jumps out again, and that flea that didn't know how to jump at all just stays there. And when you put the third flea in, and you take that lid off, he eventually follows what the other is doing. So my point is, I just don't want there to be a lid on what we can learn. And so I suppose, put more information out there, let our kids learn more, and just don't put that lid on you, so that we can continue to flourish as one, as a community, and keep everything, just keep everyone together, and we can fight the racism together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who'd like to make comments this evening? No, I see none. Thank you both for your comments, we appreciate it. Before we go on to the next portion of comments, I see our mayor is here, so Mayor David Shunker, thank you for being here, we appreciate you. I'm gonna read this to make sure I get it right. So the next part of our agenda is public hearing comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about their views on the expenditure of AIPA, American Rescue Plan Act funding, and the plan for the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to the three minutes. We appreciate the time you've taken to be here. We treat citizen comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. So anyone who'd like to speak to the American Rescue Plan Act funding specifically, I don't see anyone. Well, in that case, I will move on. Next up on our agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Seberg, second by Mrs. Stevens, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have at 7-0, the consent agenda is passed. Wow, that's it. Next up, board member comments. Based on this lovely list that Mrs. Garza put together, Mr. Di Maria goes first this evening. Board member comments.
Exciting, thank you, sir. Just real quick, I'm gonna reiterate some of the things that happened tonight. The payment adjustment for our staff, it's because our staff is so valuable to us, and I think we've shown that with the attempts that we've had to get our salaries where they should, where they're competitive, not where they should be, we're far from where they should be, but we're getting competitive. The fact that we have raised some of our per-hour salaries for extra duties shows that we care about our staff, and the fact that we're doing a payment adjustment for everybody who labored so much last year, physically and mentally. It was a very mentally trying time. The money doesn't do anything to fix that, but I hope that it lets our staff know how much they are appreciated. Mr. Thomas, I think Jeff did a great job speaking tonight. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Thomas was a, I believe it was a 1961 graduate of Osborne High School. He opened Weems Elementary our first year of being a city school. The following year, he opened Hayden. I think he's the only principal we've ever had that opened two schools. Matter of fact, I say I think, I know he is. And he's the kind of guy, when you're in the Osborne Alumni Association meetings, and Mr. Thomas shows up, it just makes you feel better. He's gonna be missed. And, speaking of Osborne Alumni Association, October 23rd is the reverse raffle. We missed it last year, we're not gonna miss it again this year, or we missed it for the last two years, right?
No.
How, how?
We just missed it last year.
Just last year.
Because I didn't win the year before.
All of my days are gone, but we missed it last year. It's a wonderful time. Mark it on your calendars, October 23rd at the fairgrounds. See me to buy your raffle ticket, but we need to sell out because we need to rebuild funds that we didn't get last year for part of the things like we just did just now for Hayden, in Mr. Thomas's honor. So, that's all I've got, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Di Maria. Next, Mr. Howingsworth.
I'm gonna keep it short, I don't have any comments today, sir.
Thank you. And next, Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo Mr. Di Maria of how pleased I am that we are able to show this a bit of gratitude and, you know, such to our, to our teachers and staff and the employees of our schools, who they've worked really hard this year to keep things going, and to be able to give them something is, is very heartwarming. I also want to remind everyone that on Saturday, we are having the Manassas Bee Festival, first time ever, at Liberia House off Mathis Avenue. So come out there, it's from 10 to 2. You can also, there's gonna be lots of educational speaking and fun activities. You can wear a costume or not wear a costume, but there will also be the bee hive colony that we captured off the Baldwin Play Area. It's now installed at that, at that apiary, so you can come and see it and see its little Baldwin bee box and experience all the, you know, benefits of pollinators and really support that in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Next, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you, Chairman. Please participate in the reverse auction in October. It benefits our school. All the funds go directly back into the Alumni Association, which in turn come back to the Board.
The approval of tonight's consent agenda included new policies on anti-racism and diversity equity and inclusion. Let these policies be a tool and a guide for us to stand united against hate and discrimination and for educational access and fairness to all of our students. We do know that there is still work to do, and I look forward to continued efforts by this board, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and our community as a whole. And thanks to Osborne Alumni Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Seberg, and I don't have any comments, so we are going to enter to a closed session. So may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation.
Second?
Motion by Vice Chair Seberg, second by Ms. Di Maria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, we are in closed session. Thank you.